That's all you.
Yeah.
There we go.
All right. Next, I'd like to recognize our team award also from Pioneer Park. So these folks will be Nathan Howard, Victor Wong, Lee Kong Ching, so participating.
Lucy.
We have two of our wins to go for our individual places in seventh grade. In second place, we have Nathan Howard from Pioneer Park. And is it Johnson Beach here?
Didn't see them.
Okay. And in third place from Johnson High, Dan Wimmer. Let's move on to our eighth grade team. So in our collaboration battle, we had a team from Harvard House, Victoria Lee, Camille Lee, and Stacey Zia. All right. For the eighth grade for our team award, I'm going to join with Carrie J. Hi. So Carrie, Mr. Shogar, I saw Mr. Shogar. I didn't think you have a coach here. Will you come and hand out awards for me?
Thank you. All right. These are your team awards. And then we have, whoops. They're, yeah, they're all the same.
All right. We have Karen Soborski, Lucas Leslie, sorry, Odessa, Sebastian Malissa, Lyla's Kirshing, Apali Wia, and Kelly Smith. All from Carrie J. High. Right. And on top three places from eighth grade. In first place, we have Jay Dixon from Johnson High. In second place, Kenny Soborski from Carrie J. High. And in third place from Carrie J. High, Lucas Leslie.
All right. Moving on to our ninth and 10th grade years. This is our class B in our collaboration battle. We have, let's see. From East Star School, Ryle Sanji, Sarah Nipas, and Megan Dixon. And then we have our coaches from East.
Team Award from Class B Central High School. And Dr. Robert H. D. Conroy. Our Class B team from Central High School. We have Nicholas Sinal, Henry Squire, Suzanne Spatten, and Clayton Fador.
That's what happens when you show up, Mary.
All right. And for the Class B, our individual persons. In first place, Nicholas Sinal. In second place, Henry Mubar. And in third place, Suzanne Spatten. Class A, these are our juniors and seniors. Folks, these guys have come to state math contests. And so they're probably the seventh graders. We'll see those same names come up frequently. So great job for coming to the state math contest. In the collaboration battle this year, we have South High School. One of us. We will hush back. And then. For our class A school award, it was taken by East High School. And that is David Haberke, Cheryl Simpson, Josie Haberke, and Phoebe Cooper. And our class L individual, Sweet Future Scholars Show. Recognize for South High School, we have David. We have from East High School, David Haberke. And from Central High School, Andrew Williams. And folks, I remember one person in class A from South High School, Amy Brown. Right. Those are 2025 student names from school history. Congratulations, guys. Right. Yes. So for folks, we're going to shake hands. You're going to go this way.
You couldn't go like this. Congratulations. 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 You have a good job. Good job. Congratulations. 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 Thank you. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations, Andrew. Congratulations. And congratulations. 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 Good work. Thank you so much. Congratulations. Yeah, we're gonna have to watch.
Well, goodbye mathematicians and their families a chance to clear out. And then we move on to our next exciting student recognition. All right. Next, we will be recognizing the LCSD one young authors competition winners. And I'd like to ask Mr. Joe Evans to come forward for that. Oh, yes.
What a great night to celebrate academics. How about that? I'm impressed because some of the names that I'm going to read were just read or appear before for math. So how exciting. So again, I just want to thank the board for celebrating with us young authors in writing. Because we all know that it's crucially important. It's how our students are going to express themselves, how they're going to express their opinions, argue their opinions, how they're going to advocate for themselves in this world. And so we know that it's crucially important for them. So next, I'd like to thank the teachers of these awesome students who put in the time to just to really come up with the creativity and the diligence to help our students to write better. As an English teacher, I know what it takes to grade a set of essays, a set of stories. It takes a lot of work. And so those teachers, I so appreciate their work. And there's a few principals also that went out of their way to help us to get young authors going this year. And so I just want to help them, thank them for their support as well. So how we'll do this is I've got four categories. Fiction, nonfiction, poetry, and graphic novels. And what we'll do is I'll start, let's see if this starts from the same place, mind you. It does, good. So we'll start with the fiction. And what I'll do is I'll invite all of the winners up to join us. And then, and then you can apply on them as they come up. I'll work on finding their certificate. And then you stay up here because as you've seen, we'll do a big celebration at the end. Okay, does that make sense? All right, great. So our fiction winners, so these are all first place winners. And these, all of these entries will go on to the state competition, which should be, all the entries have actually been sent that way already. And they'll be judged soon. So hopefully, we'll find out if LCSD is going to win there too. So first, our kinder, so we're going to read fiction first. Kindergarten, our first winner is Samantha Miriam from Pioneer Park.
Quite a queue, actually.
Okay, in first place and second grade was Charlotte Puff. From Pioneer Park. Uh, and, uh, third grade, uh, we have Nora Moore from Anderson. Okay, and, uh, fourth grade from, uh, from Gilcrest, I've got Kason Coachi. So much. Uh, and from fifth grade from Pioneer Park, I've got Patty Burningham. And then, uh, sixth grade from Pioneer Park, Lincoln Kenny. Okay, and from, um, seventh grade, McCormick, I've got Felicity Cox. And eighth grade from Johnson, I've got Jude Dixon. Okay, so now we're going to move on to our nonfiction winners. So in first, uh, first grade, I've got Cole Young from Pioneer Park. Yeah, we got room. Uh, and then, uh, second grade, I've got Lincoln Bojer from Gilcrest. Uh, and then in fourth grade, uh, from Gilcrest, I've got Preston Lee Carson. All right, uh, and then fifth grade from Pioneer Park, I've got Zoe Miriam. Merriman, my apologies. Uh, and then, uh, from, uh, also from Pioneer Park, sixth grade, I've got Eleanor Merriman. Okay, so then, uh, on to poetry. Okay, so I think we've got enough room for everybody here. Uh, poetry in, uh, from second grade in Gilcrest, I've got Lane Riddle. And third grade from Pioneer Park, I've got Hadley Skagan. And then, um, fourth grade from Pioneer Park, I have Nova Clark. From fifth grade in Pioneer Park, I've got Jensen Graves. Uh, sixth grade from Pioneer Park, I've got Henry Wright. Okay, now for our, our graphic novel winners. Um, in fifth grade, I've got Audrey Pritchard. Room for one more. Uh, in the sixth grade, uh, I've got Lincoln Kenny. All right, so again, uh, I just want to say, um, all of these, uh, students wrote beautiful and brilliant stories. Creative and thoughtful, and they, uh, they really took the time that it takes to make a good piece of writing. Because you don't get that on the first try. You get it after hard work, after the second try and after the third try. And after lots of thought and lots of creativity. So can we get, uh, did you get the picture we need? Got a sideways one. I bet we can, can we all scooch together a little bit?
Jeff, can you have the parents stand up?
Y'all fit?
Yeah, two rows. Maybe just kneel down, yeah.
Is that better?
You guys going?
And, uh, before, uh, before you all go back down, um, if you're a parent, um, or if you've come to celebrate, um, one of these, uh, one of these brilliant writers with us, would you please stand up? Hey, thank you so much. Give them one more hand if they go to their seats.
Students, if you were hoping to shake hands, you'd love them to come back out.
My apologies, folks, you're seeing a difference between Latin and English people. If you'd like to come shake hands with your trustees, if you're still a student, they would like to come up and do that, that would be great. My apologies to you.
Come on up, yeah, sorry about that.
Congratulations, good work. Congratulations. 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 Congratulations.
All the best. Thank you, Mr. Evans, and congratulations to all those incredible writers and their families. All right, our next and final recognition of the night. Sorry, is I gonna? Is for the standard response protocol video recognition. And then Todd DePur is coming up to hopefully help with that recognition for us. Thank you, Todd.
Yeah, good evening, everybody. Well, it started off as a really cool Journey concert turned into Milli Vanilli real quick. Where'd everybody go? I really appreciate you wearing the Eagles colors today, all right? Um, so, standard response protocol. The standard response protocol is, uh, a system designed primarily for schools, K through 12 schools or pre-K through 12 schools, to help our students and staff react during an emergency. Now, what's interesting about the, the system is we've always had a system in place. We've used everything from lockout, lockdown, hold, hold them outside, uh, and a whole bunch of other different phrases. But, uh, in 2006, a high school in Colorado, a classroom was taken over by an individual who'd entered the school and took students hostage. 2006, seven years after Columbine. Okay, and unfortunately, a young lady perished in that event. And her father and mother, you may have heard of them, John Michael Keys and his wife Ellen, were a little taken back to realize not only could somebody get into the school, but that the school did not have procedures in place. So in honor of their daughter Emily, they created the standard response protocol and their charity or their, their organizations called the I Love You Guys. And they said, I love you guys because it's last text that they got from their daughter in that circumstance. Okay, so out of something terrible, they created something wonderful in her memory. And that was to develop nationwide, which is now worldwide, the standard response protocol, which gives direction to students and staff for what to do during a lockdown, a secure, a hold, a shelter, or an evacuate. And we're also fortunate at the school here to have another system in place called the Raptor, which helps us do that when we have to. So, there was already a video out there from the I Love You Guys Foundation, and we liked it, it was good, but we felt that we needed to make something more Laramie County School District One themed. And so, uh, with the help of community relations, uh, particularly Brad White, who I don't think Brad's here tonight, but Brad, if you're watching, thank you. Uh, he put together a video, uh, that we now have, uh, out on our website. And I think it's on every school website. And last I checked, it received over 300 views on YouTube. I don't think that's viral yet, though. Maybe a few more zeros. Um, but the video itself also directs students and staff what to do during an emergency. And so we couldn't have done it without a cast of actors, uh, to help make the video happen. And so what we'd like to do now is recognize the students and staff and our law enforcement community partners who participated in, uh, the drill, or sorry, in the video. So first off, I know Aiden's here, Corr- Corraba. Yep.
He's here.
And, uh, administrator, Carriage Entree, you'd like to come up as well, or?
Sure.
Well, you loaned them to us, so. Um, but we have a certificate, and I also have a thank you card, I'll, I'll get to you. Uh, pretty much acknowledging, you know, that, that work. So congratulations and thank you, and if you would hang out here, are we doing one?
Yeah. Thank you for, for your time.
You can stay up here, though. And I think we also have Meredith Paul with us here. So I should say that Aiden is obviously from South and Meredith is from Central. So thank you for your contribution. And now I would like to call, uh, Dawson Smith, Lieutenant, or sorry, Lieutenant Clapper Dawson Smith from Laramie County Sheriff's Office, I'll make him a lieutenant, and he'll take the pay raise. He was also in the video. School resource officer, Manny Fardella, the South High School, I saw that was also in it.
Sorry, I'm Mary Quast, I didn't think that it would be appropriate for Todd to, um, give his own certificate to himself. So, but he was a star in the video as well. Thank you, Todd.
And while we're thanking, uh, the board trustees are thanking and recognizing, and I would like to point out that we have three students from KJ High. Now, sure, the phone. And the sheets, and to make sure they're recognized. And the work from East High, well, and Smith, also helped, so, thank you very much.
Thank you. That concludes our recognitions for the evening. Um, we're going to move now into our public comment timeframe. Um, first public comments will be those concerning agenda topics. Um, I wanted to just read, uh, some, some requests and I, the, sort of the parameters for public comment before we get started. The purpose of the board meeting is to conduct the business of the district publicly. The board sincerely values community input and feedback on school operations and welcomes public comment on both agenda and non-agenda items. Individuals wishing to comment during a board meeting must sign up by 5:45 PM on the day of the meeting. Sign up for public comment can be done electronically by accessing the form available in board docs under the public comment portion of the meeting agenda. Alternatively, individuals may also contact Darlene Davis to be added to the electronic signup sheet. We will begin by hearing public comment on agenda items, followed by public comment on non-agenda items. Please keep in mind, this is the time for board members to listen and consider, but not to comment or debate. The board asks that all speakers, first, state your first and last name. Second, keep your comments to three minutes or less. And third, note that if you wish to discuss matters pertaining to the employment of a district staff member such as the appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment duties, investigation, discipline, or dismissal of an employee, this will not be done during the public comment portion of the meeting. Such comments should be directed to the Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources, or you may request to meet with the board during the executive session. So to kick off our public comment regarding agenda items, I'd like to invite Brian Patterson to the microphone.
Superintendent, Madam Chair, uh, trustees, my name is Brian Patterson. And first, I do want to thank you as a former elected official. I appreciate how much time you put into not only Laramie County School District One with the community at large. So I, I know what these late meetings are about, and I do appreciate all that you've done. I want to speak about, um, uh, the video boards that Central has put before you as, uh, for your consideration. And I had spoken with, um, uh, Mr. Freely, and I've spoken with several other people about what it means to the community at large to engage themselves in a different way through the schools. If you go to, uh, one of the best football fields in Wyoming, it's in Rock Springs, and it's beautiful because as the sun sets over those rocks and you can see the highway coming by and a train goes by, they had this beautiful video board, and they engage the community through that. Uh, not only through, um, not unlike what you saw tonight, but, um, championing student causes and recognizing, um, individual students as they do well within school, but also the community can engage through different sponsorships and also recognition. But it occurred to me while I was sitting there, and I would talk to, um, uh, Tim Thornell, who also supports United Way, what a great way for a nonprofit to be able to step forward. And as I'm thinking about different ways to come and feature ways for students to volunteer and get engaged. I also see it as a, um, while you have a capital outlay, a, a revenue neutral product as it moves forward because it will be used to, uh, show sponsors, uh, show people who are, um, su- support the different businesses throughout the community and how they support each one of these, uh, uh, activities. But I also believe that it won't be limited to the football field and the gym. Because there's no reason why the, the funds raised can't be used for something like swimming, can't be used for something, uh, like, um, or even some of these math pieces. There's all kinds of ways that this money can be distributed among many school activities, uh, as long as it stays within what the school i- is engaged in doing. And I would speak, um, only in support of that, like, made it in under two, and I'm very proud of it. Thank you all.
Thank you. Mr. Pettis, Patterson, it said was the only one signed up for, um, to speak about agenda items. So now we'll go into non-agenda items. Um, first on this is Patricia McCoy.
Good evening, my name is Patricia McCoy. And I'm joined by fellow qualified electors in the district who have signed the submitted petition. I handed it to Darlene. Um, regarding the implementation of Wyoming statute six dash eight dash 105, the Wyoming repeal gun-free zones act effective July 1st, 2025. This petition is presented under Wyoming statute 21 dash three dash 110, Roman numeral 13, which states that the board shall consider every petition presented by at least five citizens of the school district and take action within 30 days. As our elected officials granted this authority, it is hoped that this request might be thoughtfully reviewed. While the Wyoming School Board Association, an unelected organization that neither represents the electorate nor speaks for our students, is said to be preparing a policy after lobbying against this bill throughout the legislative session. The WSBA's role remains strictly advisory and should be, should not be regarded as the sole guidance for policy decision. Under Wyoming statute 21 dash three dash 110 subsection A, Roman numeral one, it is this board as our duly elected representatives that holds the authority to adopt policies tailored to the unique needs of our district. With this in mind, it is trusted that the attached model policy, which I gave to Darlene to give you guys, um, it's titled firearms and concealed carry school property might be considered as an alternative that aligns more closely with the legislative intent of this statute. We respectfully, respectfully request four specific actions from this board. First, we ask you to review our attached model policy, which we believe faithfully implements the new Wyoming statute six dash eight dash 105 by establishing enforceable protocols and addressing all stakeholder needs. Second, we urge you to place this matter on the agenda for your next regularly scheduled meeting to allow thorough discussion. Third, we request the opportunity for public comment on all policy versions, including this one and any other drafts, to ensure transparency and community input. Finally, we petition you to consider adopting our proposed. Finally, we petition you to consider adopting our proposed policy in lieu of a blanket W S B A policy as we feel it better reflects legislative intent, enhances safety, and provides consistent enforcement. This policy balances safety concerns with respect for concealed carry rights, offering detailed guidance on training, storage, and reporting elements critical to success. As qualified electors, we believe this approach strengthens our district's response to this new statute. We trust in this board's leadership to prioritize our school's safety and compliance with state requirements. I encourage you to contact me for further discussion, and I thank you for your time and consideration. The petition and supporting documents are all given to you guys for review, and I made it under three. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. The next individual signed up for public comment on non-agenda items is M. Booth. I believe that's Murphy Booth.
Trustees, Chairman, thank you. Um, I'm Murphy Booth, and I know we've been very acquainted lately over email. Thank you for reading all my long emails. Um, I will not speak of pending relegation tonight or personnel issues, but regardless of that, the public is still very upset about the school closure topic and has been since the report came out. Let's remember, it's not only parents that are upset about this. Tonight, I am also here to represent teachers as a former second grade teacher for five years. Many teachers who feel scared to express their anger who also strongly oppose this. They love their schools, they love their neighborhoods, and this isn't about ARP anymore. This is about doing the right thing. It is so much bigger than that. It is important now to pivot directions to regain the trust of this community. A great example of pivoting directions to increase public trust comes from a recent city of Cheyenne council vote where they repealed the downtown paid parking situation. And I will quote this while leaving out some of the police officers that they mentioned. It states, "I recognize that while we may have misstepped in our communication and lack thereof, I think that it's important that we recognize and hear what you have to say. This is key. Listen to your public. Do the right thing. Build ARP. Remedy the other buildings and leave quality education at the hands of these great teachers in neighborhood schools. It is important to show this community that you hear what we are saying and pivot directions away from this arbitrary report and the evidence of what we have now seen in the public records video. We want you to pivot immediately and regain the trust of the students, staff, and the parents that you serve. Thank you so much."
Thank you, Murphy. Um, next on our list, and I I was so sorry um, about butchering your last name, Abigail. I be uh, but you can say it for us. I'm sorry.
Um, Abigail Bode-Wines, Madam Chairman, trustees, superintendent. I'm here tonight to talk about the rhetoric that the district is using to undermine parents who are dissenting um, with who have dissenting viewpoints. Most frequently and egregiously is the term emotional is being used to describe parents who disagree with the district's attempt to silently close one-third of the elementary schools in this town. I find it a little ironic that I'm sitting here to a board of all women, which I find impressive, but I'm speaking because I know that you know that the term emotional is often used to intentionally de-legitimize and undermine the credibility and viewpoints of women. The rhetoric used by the district is that we as parents, um, what we have to say cannot possibly be due to any sort of rational thought or intelligence, but rather is the result of less than emotional reaction. Because, you know, apparently I'm just a mom who needs to calm down. But let's be honest, it's been six months. This isn't emotional anymore. The reality is that parents who are raising these issues are highly qualified to raise them. I want to remind each of you that when this district misleadingly told parents they could only challenge the math behind the Mercer, which in my opinion was to intimidate and dissuade parents from challenging the study at all, a group of parents were able to do just that, and within a couple of weeks had completely retroengineered the entire study, had found the calculus errors, the sloppy weighting of criteria, and the failure to follow methodological best practices. Unfortunately, not within the week that the the district gave folks to come to give that feedback to the board. And I also in my opinion that that was also until by design based on the videos in an attempt to make sure there wasn't any feedback from the hornet's nest. So I'm here to set the record straight. Our actions not driven simply by emotion, but rather by desire to see this board uphold Wyoming values of transparency, public involvement, parental rights, and finally, good education policy for not just our children. Because let's be honest. I I have a five-year-old. We're gonna have four more campus seats. This is for all children going forward. The parents in this district who are raising these issues know exactly what the Mercer study did. I spent hours figuring out what that study did. And how the district and the school facilities division manipulated and intentionally used the report to achieve desired outcomes. It's the closure of schools. We, the emotional parents, understand all of this. And so I encourage sport to get engaged and to understand the Mercer methodology and what was done and the actions taken by the district staff to achieve the desired end result. And to please engage with parents, their constituents on these issues. Thank you.
Thank you. Our fourth speaker tonight is Dylan Ford.
Hi, guys. Um, Dylan Ford, C T A president. Uh, I got one serious thing and then just basically a bunch of thank you. So the serious thing, um, and as former, our previous speaker brought this up. The repeal gun-free zones passed, and on behalf of a really, a lot of really concerned uh, staff and students, just please make sure that there are safeguards in place uh, that ensures that our rollout doesn't put students or staff in harm's way. Um, so I appreciate that. And moving on to the thank yous, uh, first, I appreciate the board members who met with the math teachers and counselors directly about uh, the math policy. Um, they actually told me about it and they really seemed to appreciate it. And that's how we build a culture where we're incorporating educator voices is one really boring meeting at a time. So appreciate you uh, making that boring meeting happy. Um, it's uh, the second thank you uh, goes to the administration. So it's no secret that we face uh, fewer students coming in next year, which really impacts the funds um, that we're able to work with. And I really appreciate the administration um, finding ways to make to accommodate that loss in ways that don't affect our classrooms as far away from the classrooms as we can make it. And finally, after a really long brutal legislative session, I just want to thank all the school board members, administrators, staff, uh, even some students who showed up for our kids. Um, it really could have been bad this year, and I sincerely sincerely believe that your advocacy made a positive difference in what bills did and didn't make it. So thank you.
Thank you, Dylan. Um, our final um, person for public comment is Heather Webb. Is Heather here or maybe online?
Madam Chair, I'm not seeing Heather Webb online.
Okay. All right. Well, we will move on with our agenda then. The next item on our agenda is board communications and reports and upcoming meetings. Um, under upcoming meetings, um, I believe this weekend, March twenty-first through the third is the COSPA conference in Atlanta, Georgia. Um, I believe we have at least a couple of board members who are planning to attend that. Trustees Cook and Burden, okay? Um, next Wednesday, we will have the executive trustees meeting with the superintendent. Um, it's a little bit earlier than we would normally meet, um, but because of spring break, we're pushing it, pushing it up a week. Um, so that is March twenty-seventh at one P M. And um, would love to have two trustees who might be available come to that. Uh, trustee Humphrey, okay? And anybody else?
Thursday, not Wednesday.
Was that a Thursday?
No.
Okay. I'm sorry. That's a Thursday.
I just.
Um, is anybody else besides Brooke? No? Okay. All right. So that will maybe just be trustee Humphrey and I, the superintendent Newton. If somebody else decides sees that you're free and you'd like to join us, um, let me know and we'll send an email out, a reminder too, just in case your schedules change. Um, our next meeting is April seventh. Uh, we'll have a five P M. Work session that night followed by the six P M. Regular board meeting. And the last item on our list right now for upcoming meetings is Wednesday, April ninth at six thirty P M. There will be a parent advisory committee meeting here in the boardroom. All right. So do we have any individual board communications or reports that you'd like to share this evening? Trustee Ashby?
So I just want to, anybody that's out here or um, I I know we asked Dr. Newton and uh, the principals to make sure that they were inviting us to events and things that they're having, and we've gotten a lot more of those.
Yeah.
Recently. Uh, so thank you, and please continue because it's uh, an easy way for us to make sure they're on the calendar ahead of time and and try to show up. Assuming you don't end up sick that night, but I just wanted to say thank you for doing that.
Yeah. Anybody else? Trustee Klaassen?
Okay. Madam Chair, I just wanted to congratulate our um, Central Women's Basketball Team for their tremendous show this season and ultimately their uh, win as the state champions. So I wanted to just make sure that we thanked um, our coaches and our administrative staff that support those, all of our teams, and just really proud of these young ladies, these young women who are um, leading by example and and did did a great example, a great job at their sport, but also just being ambassadors for our our high school. And then I'll also mention, and I can't remember the exact name, but I know that I ran into a couple of you um, that there was a job fair kind of trades um, show for our students that was held in a week or so ago. And I was able to pop into that, and boy, that was exciting for me just because not everyone is on the college track. But there's so many interesting and really good careers out there for folks. And just to introduce our students to the different types of things that they can do um, by going to our local community college or through a trade school. Um, or, you know, joining up in our military or and going to office, you know, becoming a police officer, law enforcement officer. So I just was excited to see all of those options and all those introductions for our students in our district. So way to go, team.
Trustee Cook?
Um, thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I've been to a few things, but one um, event was held at Henderson. And they do an awesome job at um, inviting the parents. I was at literacy night. And so the parents, and it's well attended, and it was very well organized, and the governor was there and some of the city council people were there. So um, and I think there's a math night that's coming up again at Henderson. So some of these elementary schools as well as all the schools, but they really do a good job of inviting parents and getting the whole families involved.
Absolutely. All right. Anybody else? Okay. Then um, I will turn it over now to Dr. Newton for reports from superintendent and staff.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, feeling my own presentation from Minister Sicario tonight. As everyone is well aware, the one of the legislative policy changes um, or will be coming down on the repeal of schools as gun-free zones. And so I just want to give a little bit of an update on implementing um, that new statute. The um, there is a little bit of misinformation out there, so hopefully I can provide an update, maybe clear up some miscommunication. Um, this is a statute that allows the public who have um, concealed carry permits to carry on school grounds. Um, the the statute specifically prohibits students who are enrolled in school from carrying. And so I know that that was one um, question that that was uncertain for a while, but it has now been fully resolved. And so um, just want to make it clear to the public that students, um, whether they have concealed permits or not, um, will not be carrying in our schools. And when the statute also contemplates the ability for a board to pass a policy to uh, talk about the terms under which staff can uh, conceal carry in the schools. One of the things that the statute requires is that we meet and consult with local law enforcement. And coincidentally, that happened today at one o'clock. And so our safety and security office met with local law enforcement and they went through um, all of uh, the insights that law enforcement had on perhaps what we ought to consider for our policy as we begin to write it. So in the next um, this week, the next week, as we finalize um, some of those, uh, looking at those comments, reviewing those comments, um, please remember that this, while it's very, very important, it will follow normal policy procedures, which will include a draft sent to policy advisory for feedback um, with comments, a bit of time for them to provide comment. Um, then an updated draft for the board to uh, consider for forty-five day review. And uh, then after that, obviously, uh, when the public comment period ends, would be the time when you could actually vote on that policy. We know that we need to have it in place by the time uh, summer rolls around and we get going into the new year. I believe that our current timeline, um, we mean, uh, it looks like we could get all of those things that need done, done for a final adoption at the June sixteenth board meeting. That's the hope. So just a number, um, a number of pieces have to fall into place, but um, the first one already has. And so we're very appreciative of our law enforcement providing feedback. Second update, um, the forty-five day public comment period recently ended on the math credit issue. And we want to thank everybody who offered their opinions. Um, our staff has just finished compiling and redacting the comments, and I believe maybe just today, this board has received um, that public comment. And so given the the previous comments uh, made by the board at the January twenty-seventh meeting, uh, the district has been working on alternatives that do not uh, involve reducing the number of math credits for graduation for all students. Um, so while we continue to refine these options, and we work to consider and incorporate public comment into these motions, we will not be bringing a motion forward at this time on that topic. Um, next one, you know, the last couple of meetings, you've seen um, some um, approvals on U land for um, uh, contracts for next year. And so I just want to give you a couple of timeline updates there. Um, tonight, in fact, you have one of, I believe it's program administrators and high school athletic directors. Last week you had cabinet and building principals. And so that says pre-policy, we um, we bring it before you to give H R approval to begin those contract conversations. In late March, um, H R will send out an intent to return or not intern, uh, not return, excuse me, form um, as well. Um, in O'Grillish is when um, the non-continuing contract teachers who will be offered a contract will receive their contract. And of course, those who are continuing contract by definition of the fact they're continuing contract, we don't actually offer them a contract. It just carries over to the next year. Um, and after negotiations conclude, which are waiting, um, the actual contracts will be sent out individually to um, all those folks. So uh, with that, and give Mr. Sicario a chance to start making his way towards the podium. We have a re-presentation, um, all things legislative and budget, and especially as the legislative issues relate to our budget. With that, Mr. Sicario.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Dr. Newton, members of the board. Um, and as Dr. Newton mentioned, uh, the second meeting in March presents a great opportunity uh, to provide an update on the current year's financials uh, with regards to our current um, operating revenues and expenditures. Um, and also allows us to talk a little bit about the preliminary fiscal impacts from the recent legislative session. Um, my hope is that uh, we'll be able to talk a little bit about um, the general fund um, as it represents the largest portion of our operating uh, finances and supplement a little bit of the uh, um, monthly treasure report that you receive as board members. Uh, certainly, there's some more info, there's more detailed information there on some of the other funds that we operate as a school district, but I'll focus. Uh, certainly there's some more info, there's more detailed information there on some of the other funds that we operate as a school district, uh, but I'll focus primarily on our general fund. Um, so Madam Chair, just starting a little bit on the, the revenue side of the ledger, if you will. There are a, a number of different um, projections and historical and current trends that uh, we utilize to uh, estimate. Uh, where we will end the current fiscal year. Um, and that's usually where I would enter that disclaimer that these are very tentative and subject to change. Um, and uh, certainly will, will be a little bit different as we approach the final um, quarter of the year. Now, um, we are on track to be under our revenue projections um, slightly. About um, a half a percent or one point four million dollars. Um, and I'll talk a little bit about the mechanics of how that works, but um, you'll see on the, the screen here. Um, we break down our revenue um, into uh, the, the level where it's assessed or originates. Um, and this is typical of any public school district, we break out local county, state, federal and other revenue sources. So I've kind of broke those out here um, for our discussion. Um, I'll start a little bit on the, the local revenue side. You'll see that um, we're projected to be higher, about five point three million higher than we originally projected. Um, I'll tell you that there's a lot of uh, mechanics involved in those estimates. You've heard me talk about in the past that we have different um, touch points over cour- the course of the year. Uh, where we review um, our process estimates. Uh, and to, to maybe summarize a little bit, um, we're really working across three different fiscal years at a particular time. Uh, we're looking at non-mineral ad valorem taxes from uh, twenty twenty-three and twenty-four. Um, we're looking at twenty-four and twenty-five uh, tax assessments for mineral production. Um, as we kind of enter into the final quarter of the year. Now, um, I'm going to touch a little bit, um, when we get to the legislative bills on uh, a change that's been profiled here with our final June payment that comes from the treasurer. Um, but I'll get into that here in a moment. Now, um, again, on the local resource side, I've told you, um, uh, as a district, we certainly um, are very uh, tuned in with our treasury services and our investments. Um, we are on track to uh, be slightly less last year than last year with our um, our uh, interest earnings as a district. I told you. Um, I think in July that um, we had uh, um, a significant in interest uh, return uh, to the extent of roughly four million dollars as a district as a whole. Um, we're going to be slightly under that, but we're trending uh, right where we expected to be. Uh, just one other note with regards to our local revenue. Um, as we completed the S R funds from the prior years as we worked through the COVID nineteen pandemic. Uh, we did have indirect costs, which were uh, a kind of a fancy way of saying that these federal grants were responsible for covering some of the costs as a district that we incur, things like. Uh, payroll, financial services, human resources. Um, we hit the final end and the final draw on those funds. Uh, so as we enter into the upcoming years, uh, we'll start to taper off those uh, indirect cost revenue projections. Um, moving into the county level here a little bit, um, you'll see that we have um, uh, higher uh, collections again. This has to do with our unanticipated mineral production uh, for this year. Um, I'll tell you as we enter uh, uh, the next month or two. Uh, preliminary information shows that we're going to trail off considerably on uh, the mineral ad valorem tech, tax collection. So we've adjusted that here as well. Um, state revenue is going to trend down. Um, this has to do with um, that interplay between those local tax collections. And what we receive from the state through uh, what we call our entitlement payment. And um, as you guys have heard me say before. Um, there's a uh, a, a very um, specific connection between the, the more we collect as a school district and local taxes, the less the state provides. Uh, through entitlement payments to make us whole with regards to the guaranteed level of funding that we receive as a school district. So as we've collected more, um, that's lessened um, the state aid. And you'll see here that um, I'm projecting about a four point seven percent decrease. Uh, that does uh, account for adjustments as we work with the Department of Education. Uh, we have a statutory deadline at the end of this month that after this point, uh, we cannot change those revenue projections. Um, so just this last week, um, I did submit the final adjustment to make sure that we were on track to collect the exact amount we need. In order to mitigate like a tax excess or a tax shortfall situation. Um, then I'm sure just a couple of other points here as I um, kind of work through and wrap up the revenue discussion. Um, on the federal side, you see we do receive some money as a reminder. Uh, we receive funding through uh, the U S Department of Education Impact Aid Program. Um, which really accounts for our military connected uh, families. Um, as well as our ROTC program. And you'll see that we're trending a little bit higher than we anticipated. Um, and again, this is really tied to those uh, annual surveys that we do every fall uh, with our students across the district. And then as we move into the other category, you'll see that significantly lower than our initial, initial projection. Um, this isn't uh, due to us completely missing the mark. Um, thinking back to when we did adopt a budget this summer. Um, I had projected um, and still do that we will need to use some of our reserves to cover some school bus purchases. Um, right now, uh, we have, I think roughly fifteen of those buses on order. Um, it's unclear if those will clear or be delivered to us before the end of the fiscal year, but until we expense those buses, um, that money won't transfer. So that'll be updated certainly as we um, wrap up the, the end of the year. Now, um, as I kind of wrap up again on the revenue side, I'll tell you that um, next year will look very different. Um, I'll talk a little bit about the impact of Senate File sixty-nine and what that might do uh, for our tax collections for the upcoming year. Um, and again, uh, I'll reference some changes in the way our uh, county treasurers will uh, provide resources to us as well. And so then moving on to the expenditure side, I'm just going to move things around here a little bit. Um, you'll see at the very top of the screen here, I have um, our projections for the biggest component, the biggest. Budget division that we have in the district, which is our payroll and our general fund. Um, and I'll come back to that here in a moment. Um, but uh, I'll talk a little bit about um, the personnel or excuse me, the non-personnel first. Um, you'll see kind of at the bottom right, um, a, a rough estimate of where we'll be in total for our non-personnel budgets. And I've grouped these out um, into the major content areas uh, that we budget for as a, a school district. Now, one of the big things that um, I, I want to make note of is on that left-hand column where you see total supply, equipment and services budget of about forty-eight point five million dollars. That does include the carryover, the obligations from uh, fiscal year twenty-four that moved into fiscal year twenty-five. Um, and that allows us to do things like plan for large and costly outlet for things like curriculum, those bus purchases that I mentioned, technology refreshes and those type of things. Um, I talked a little bit about the bus purchases as you're kind of um, looking through and um, seeing where we are, at least with the projections for the end of the year. Um, you'll see um, on the uh, transportation line, it looks like we're um, going to be way under on that budget, budget allocation. But that again, has to do with the timing of uh, the delivery of those buses. Uh, I'd also tell you that that six million dollar mark at the bottom uh, represents kind of my best estimate at this point in time. Of where we might be at the end of the year on some of those carryover obligations. So in total, um, you'll see that uh, the expenditures and obligations are roughly about two hundred and forty-two million dollars. Um, that does account for those carryover purchases that I talked about, um, which is really close. I mean, that represents. Um, you know, roughly ninety-eight, ninety-eight, ninety-nine percent of uh, the budgets um, to you as the governing board have appropriated. Um, just a couple of other key points, I'd like to uh, talk a little bit about um, where we are um, on the utility side before we get into personnel. Uh, that's one of the biggest and it is the biggest um, non-personnel budget that we operate as a district. Um, we are trending down. Um, I'd like to say it's because Mr. Nap turns the light off every time he, he leaves a room. Uh, but it's a little bit more complicated than that. Um, natural gas, um, we're showing about thirty percent down from the prior year. Um, and it's modestly lower rates. Um, the weather patterns again are going to be uh, the most influential factor. On uh, where our natural gas demand is and um, we've had um, uh, what we might call mild winter again. Um, and then we've been able to um, see that in the, the expenditures for our utilities. Um, electricity, we're trending about four percent up. We expect it to be um, sounding a, a little bit like a, a, a repeat of last year, but we're still seeing uh, big. Um, cost pressures on things like garbage and waste, um, sewer and water. Um, those are all running double-digit increases over the prior year, but we anticipated that um, and planned for those increases. Now, um, before I kind of move on and uh, wrap up a little bit of the conversation um, on this particular slide, I'll point out a couple of other things. Um, with regards to utilities, um, we are planning for um, increase in um, our water utility uh, costs as a district. Uh, the stormwater assessment um, that the city passed uh, will impact the school district. Um, so we um, have worked with the city and we understand that that'll be about uh, two hundred and twenty, two hundred and fifty thousand dollar. Um, increase in utility costs for the district going forward on an annual basis. Um. Madam Chair, just a, a real quick um, final note on this particular slide, you'll see that the, the charter schools, um, the line uh, kind of third from the top there. Um, shows a, a projection to be higher than what uh, the budget allocation was. Um, this has to do with rightsizing their budgets um, with a change in law that allows. And let me clarify that the school district approved um, charter schools. Um, they are eligible to participate in a hundred percent reimbursements for special education and certain transportation costs. And we've been able to um, facilitate that process and adjust their budgets accordingly. And so um, you'll see an increase um, on that line item as well. Moving on to the, the big line that I mentioned earlier, um, as you know, uh, our payroll represents about eighty-five percent of, of our general fund budget as a whole. Um, I brought the slide up um, last year, certainly the numbers are super tiny on the screen here, but. Um, what this shows is our monthly expenditure on our, our general fund payroll budget. Um, the reason that you see um, the accounting period nine is because we've only finished one of our um, monthly semi-monthly payroll processing. So um, that's not representative of where we'll end the month, it's just kind of where we are at this point in time. Um. We are expecting um, to can you, excuse me, to continue to see um, roughly a three to four percent increase on the salaries component. This aligns with uh, where we were, where we were uh, when we uh, finished the negotiation process last year. Um, health insurance, as you know, um, we uh, incurred a seven and a half percent increase um, as we came into this fiscal year. Um, we're seeing that um, align with um, our budgeted expenditures in the health insurance line. Um, but one of the other areas that I mentioned that um, we'd have to adjust to is as we worked through the COVID nineteen pandemic. There were certain credits that were uh, available to school districts that brought down things like our workers comp premium, premium and those type of things. Um, as we've seen those expired, um, we've started to see those expenses increase. We're up about seven percent when it comes to the uh, the workers comps premium. Um, some good news, um, we have lower than anticipated wages and overtime, which is I'm always going to be one of the more controllable costs that we have as a school district on the payroll side. Um, unemployment and severance pay is trending down currently, um, which is all um, falling in line with uh, where we were for the budgeted amount of that hundred and ninety-four million. Uh, I anticipate that will be within about a hundred, or excuse me, about uh, one point five million uh, of our, our budgeted amount. Uh, that's. On a percentage basis, um, about point seven percent. So again, we keep very tight payroll budgets. Um, and we'll continue to do that as we move into some of our position-based budgeting and those type of things going forward. So Madam Chair, um, I'm going to segue a little bit into uh, the preliminary impacts from this past legislative session. Um. Now, um, certainly this isn't intended to be an exhaustive list of um, everything that um, your district administration staff is working through. Uh, to figure out implementation and next steps, but it's really intended to focus just on the financial pieces. Um, and so what I've done is just kind of boiled these down to a couple of, more than a couple, at least uh, some of the major areas that. Uh, we're tracking some type of impact on our finances or our financial operations. So. Um, this year, a little bit of a, a non-conventional way um, to uh, bring the uh, external cost adjustment into session law. Was through a recalibration bill. Um, what that did was um, established a, a select committee on school finance recalibration. Um, and as you guys know, um, we will be starting through that process this interim, uh, which is conducted every five years that uh, seeks to examine. Uh, the cost basis of a national program in light of changing conditions and that type of thing. Um, what had been a, a topic where we would discuss the supplemental bill, this is that external cost adjustment. And I've uh, lined out those adjustments to model salaries here. Um, you'll see that the both categories. Um, within our model um, is to be adjusted by eight and a half percent. Um, keep in mind that does um, not account for just um, the, excuse me, it counts for the uh, costs associated with increases in. Um, FICA and Medicare and um, all the other um, pieces that go into uh, those uh, fringe costs associated with payroll. Um, but also the uh, um, educational materials adjustment, a slight increase of about one percent. Um, and then the energy uh, adjustment to our funding model for the upcoming year will be decreased about um, six point two percent. Um, and as I mentioned earlier, um, we're trending down on our uh, utilization and our usage. Um, however, we're not seeing that same decrease in our rates. Um, and certainly um, things like the additional stormwater assessment will kind of compound this issue. Um, as a whole, um, that category alone represents a decrease in funding of about a half a million dollars for the school district. All in, um, that external cost adjustment uh, will provide about nine point three million dollars um, to the di- district for the upcoming year. But it's important to note that this is just one component. Um, you've heard um, me and Dr. Newton and others talk about the financial impact of the decreasing enrollment, um, health insurance. And there's a number of other funding model components um, that will have some effect on that final amount that's available to the school district for the upcoming year. Moving on to just a, a, a few points, and I won't uh, spend a whole lot of time going into each of these. Um, and you'll see that there are a number of different school finance related bills. Um, starting at the top here, you'll see um, Senate File thirty-four. Um, what this does for two thousand twenty-five, twenty-six is it amends the calculations for things like routine and major maintenance. Uh, there's a fairly complex calculation that's used to determine uh, what that major maintenance allocation to a school district is. Um, what this legislation does is increases that allowable educational square footage calculation from a hundred and fifteen percent to a hundred and thirty-five percent. Um, it also um, provides an adjustment on what they called a calculated replacement value, which is another. Factor within that formula uh, moves that from two, which is a multiplier to two and a half percent. Um, but it's important to point out the, to at least this point in time, this is a one-year change. Um, so we're working on what that fiscal impact will be to the school district. Um, certainly the declining enrollment will also be a factor in that calculation as well. Um, House Bill two fifty-nine, um, this is a supplemental K twelve facilities appropriation. Now I'll just note that um, there are no additional direct appropriations to the district. Um, there is uh, an appropriation for inflationary factors for previously approved uh, construction projects, but um, what this. This legislation does that um, could potentially impact school, the school district is that it um, directs the state construction department as well as the state school facilities commission. Um, to uh, conduct a study of what the implications would be if the state construction department. Um, was responsible for directing all major maintenance expenditures and supervising all school district uh, major maintenance projects. So um, it looks like there's a pretty um, long reporting period, it's going to take multiple years for um, the state construction department to report on, out on those findings. But um, that is one that um, we'll certainly be tracking uh, the developments on. Um, to touch quickly on um, House Bill eighteen, um, there are a number of factors that will uh, very directly impact our school district. Um, first, uh, this bill allowed for a minimum level of resources to small school districts. Um, for things like career technical education, supplies and materials. Uh, which is great for some of our smaller school district colleagues across the state that struggle to find those resources for those C T E programs. Um, it also provided some supplemental opportunities uh, for school districts. Uh, but probably the biggest factor, um, and the one that we're working to implement is that it takes the funding that we used to receive. For C T E supplies, materials as part of the block grant, and it moves it into a categorical grant. Um, so the, the kind of net effect of that process will be, um, it'll be treated as any other restricted grant from the state. Um, we think about Perkins Grants from the federal government that requires um, specialized tracking. Um, it's represented and um, portrayed in a different fund within our financials. Um, I expect there'll be certain reporting requirements and it may require um, some additional um, administrative burden on the, the schools and the district as, as a whole. Um. Madam Chair, the, the next one I have here um, is um, House Bill one ninety-nine, the Steamboat Legacy Scholarship Act. Uh, we talked a little bit about this last year, as you know, um, that modifies the educational uh, spending account from last year. Uh, removes some income restrictions, but increases the voucher amount. Um, the reason that I have this one even on the list is that um, it could potentially uh, provide some revenue for preschool programs or non-title preschool programs. And so uh, we're looking forward to additional information from the state on how that might uh, be um, qualified for school districts. Um, Senate File seventy-three, um, this is an interesting bill as well. Um, what the, is it allocates a portion of the district central off, central office resources um, to the charter schools. Um, and this would include both the two uh, district-approved charter schools. As well as the state-approved charter school. And as you recall, um, that the state-approved charter school is um, uh. Calculated within the funding for our district as a whole. Um, so there's a proportioned adjustment that um, our central office resources will be allocated um, to those three schools. Um, now speaking specifically to the district-approved charter schools. Um, there's a, a significant amount of um, uh, administration and oversight and assistance that. Um, uh, both the finance and, and purchasing department provide as well as uh, Mr. Jackson on the federal grant side. Um, things like um, state data reporting, grants management, accreditation review. Um, there is a significant cost associated that with that. Um, up until this point, we were able to use the central office resources that were allocated to the district to cover those costs. Um, we have started a conversation. We have started conversations with Poter and Pass about enacting the authorized administrative fee that was put into statute a couple of years to recover some of those costs for that oversight and administration. It will certainly keep the board apprised of of that work as well. Madam Chair, there was a lot, and believe it or not, there was a lot I didn't leave on this list. But just to hit on a few more, I mentioned earlier, Senate File sixty-nine. This is the the bill that would establish a property tax exemption for that family residential structures. I believe a lot of us have been kind of following the developments of this. This is effective as of the January first, two thousand twenty-five tax assessment. So we'll start to see the impact of that this upcoming November in when we start profiling out next year's revenue payment. And just as a quick reminder, this is the bill that establishes that twenty-five percent reduction on that fair market value of the single-family residential structures with a limit of up to one million dollars. Now, to bring that home a little bit more, there's both indirect and direct kind of implications for this. I would tell you that our district as a whole, we receive about fifty-eight million dollars a year in non-mineral production, ad valorem collections. It's a little difficult to precise out how much of that is for single-family residences, how much is it below and above the million-dollar mark? We're working to refine what that calculation might be. But just kind of referencing earlier, when I talked about kind of that that inverse relationship between the more we collect at the local level, the more the less the state provides. Well, now it's going to tip the other way. That that loss of local tax collections means the state will have to provide more entitlement money to meet that guaranteed level of funding. So now on to the kind of the indirect cost of what that might do. That means that there'll be more more pressure on the state's school foundation program to meet those entitlement needs. So that's where the kind of the indirect implications are for the school district. Now, I will mention just real quickly, like some of the other local governments, we will see the impact on our community or excuse me, Cheyenne Community Recreation District. We'll feel kind of the impact of that decrease in ad valorem taxes as we start working and developing our revenue projections for the upcoming year. Senate File one forty-five, this one is maybe taking you back in history a little bit. In two thousand twenty-two, there was a constitutional amendment that would provide for the investment of public funds and local governments in equities, basically stocks. And we've talked about that a few times over the years. Recently, what the 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 new bill does is it takes that next step to allow school districts like ours to directly invest in stocks and equities. Requires certain additional requirements around investment advisory boards and that type of thing. And I again, I've said it before, and I'll say it again. At this point in time, the district is not interested in day trading. Not to say that there is a very valuable opportunity for some local governments. For us as a school district, we prioritize liquidity and safety of those investments as opposed to long-term gains. So at least at this point in time, we don't have any interest in looking to expand our portfolio into stocks and equities. But certainly, we may have those conversations down the road. House Bill one twenty-nine, this bill repeals a transfer that used to be required from our county treasures on near the last business day of June. And so what this would do, and what it was intended to do, was to give school districts that last collection that might be sitting with a fiscal agent being the county treasurer. So as tax collections come in, they don't come on in at the the same day every month. We receive a treasurer payment about the eleventh every month. There was a statute that required a final kind of additional payment that would come at the end. That has been repealed, and so I've adjusted that revenue projection that I talked about earlier to account for that. For our district, that could be millions of dollars that came in at the end of the year. And candidly, that was a very difficult adjustment that if we missed the mark or it was higher than we anticipated, we could be in a tax excess, which is a penalty situation. And so this was a welcome change as well. Just a couple here, Madam Chairs, I I start to wrap up. Senate File one thirty-seven, what this did, as you recall, a number of years ago, again, when the pandemic started, the legislature temporarily increased the level of reserves a school district could maintain. That moved from fifteen percent to thirty percent, and it was set to expire at the end of fiscal year twenty-six. Now, certainly, the COVID nineteen pandemic has subsided. But some of the cost pressures and the the need for our district to cash flow haven't. Things like the federal grants, changes in the way the state allocated special education, some of these higher-cost outlays for things like buses and residential places, and so those type of things continue to be big pressures. So the legislature extended that kind of thirty percent two years up until two thousand twenty-eight, where it's currently set to expire. Two more bills to just briefly touch on. House Bill one seventy-two, this has been discussed a little bit tonight, and certainly my intent isn't to get ahead of the policy discussion. Really, just to emphasize some of the areas that we're looking at that may have financial implications. Certainly, insurance coverage is something that we're already working with our insurance brokers on what that might look like going forward. Training requirements, things like secure lock boxes for the district. Keep in mind that about a year ago, the legislature also passed a small appropriation of about fifty thousand dollars that was available to school districts to cover some of the training costs associated with staff concealed carry. Certainly, we're we're able to, we'll we'll seek to access those funds as we move forward. And Madam Chair, just as I kind of wrap up, one last kind of operational budget bill was Senate File one forty-three. Currently, existing statutes only authorize our school district to invest our public funds in banking institutions, no credit unions. What this bill does is it allows credit unions that meet certain requirements to be designated as depositories of public funds. Kind of the administrative impact, as you know, we go through the process of reaching out to our banking institutions to see if they would like to be considered for depository status with the school district. This will increase that workload a little bit, a little bit more on the disclosures. And hopefully, maybe some more competitive fiscal services with banking institutions. So as I wrap up, Madam Chair, I'll just conclude with kind of the next phases in the the budget development process. I've only highlighted a few of them here. As we enter into April, shortly after spring break, we'll start to finalize school and department budgets. In May, we'll present the preliminary budget to the board. That typically happens the second meeting in May to give you a little bit more refined look at the upcoming year. And then in June, we'll continue to refine all of our assumptions and our funding model scenarios with the budget hearing in July. With that, Madam Chair, I'm happy to address any questions the board may have.
Thank you, Mr. Sicari. I believe Trustee Claussen, did you want to start?
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. I had just a couple of quick follow-up questions on some of the information we received this evening. Just for clarity for for me. Back on showing, one of your slides was showing that the ECA was down significantly on energy. And I was curious if you knew what the reasoning was for that projection or that decision.
Yeah, Madam Chair, Trustee Claussen, yes. The external cost adjustment is examined through kind of statutory means, skipping kind of over the professional side of those adjustments. These adjustments are tied very specifically to Bureau of Labor statistic indices on inflationary pressures. The energy component is a little bit more nationalized. It's not regional to our our state or our city. So there may have been a decrease in utility costs as of the nation as a whole. Certainly, we're not feeling that same relief when it comes to utility costs. And the second point I'd make is that this is an index that's published and finalized in the fall. That's based on data from prior year, so there's a little bit of a lag before those indices are updated.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My thanks to my other two follow-ups. Thank you for that. My second question had to do with Senate File thirty-four. And you mentioned that it was a one you've changed to, and I'm wondering if that's related to the pending recalibration calibration or if there's another reason for the one-year change.
Madam Chair, Trustee Claussen, I I believe that's correct. There was an intent to continue to study. I would tell you that over the last few years, there's been a number of presentations from the state's consultants on what the major maintenance calculation should be adjusted to. As a matter of fact, that two-point-five multiplier that I mentioned earlier had previously been two-point-five percent. It was reduced. Now it's back to two-point-five percent. That piece will actually stay. The educational growth square footage adjustment, I think the easiest way to kind of describe the evaluation of that adjustment is as a school district's enrollment decreases, the growth square footage that Mr. Knapp and his team have to maintain doesn't. And so that calculation provides the lesser of our actual educational growth square footage or that hundred and fifteen, now a hundred and thirty-five percent. That'll be for one year as the school facilities commission continues to examine that that calculation.
And then my final question, Madam Chair, is related to the House Bill eighteen. And I think it was mentioned, I haven't, I don't read that bill very carefully, but I think it was mentioned. My understanding was that that bill was to ensure that K twelve had more funds available for CTE. But it sounds like the the money is coming, would be coming to the districts outside the block grant. And so that makes me initially question, is that guaranteed funding? And is there a floor for guaranteed funding? Or is it just at the whim of the current legislature to fund whatever level they they choose? Do they have to? Is there a mandate that they have to?
Madam Chair, Trustee Claussen, the the allocation to our school district as well as the other forty-seven is formula-based. It's primarily calculated on the number of state-approved career technical education classes that we have as a school district from the prior year. And there's a number of things that have to meet that requirement. There has to be a three-course sequence. They can't count for classes that are taught concurrently, those type of things. But that that class count through teacher reporting is converted into a supply allocation. It's roughly fourteen thousand dollars per teacher is kind of the the calculation. So that provides, Madam Chair, that floor that Trustee Claussen is is referencing. Now, where it does become a little precarious is that as a block grant, we were able to direct those resources to things like junior high career and technical education. And just for those of us who are kind of keeping score, our district has typically spent more on career technical education than the state provides through the block grant. That's not the case in every school district, and it's going to ebb and flow. We'll have years where we have higher expenditures for supplies and equipment. There'll be years we have less. As you know, we have a career and technical education reserve fund to address some of those high costs. But this will also impact our ability to save those resources in that reserve fund. So maybe more direct to your question, Trustee Claussen, is that floor will be maintained. There's no decrease in that funding, just a lot more with kind of the the grants management side.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Thank you, Mr. Sicari.
Madam Chair, with that, that is the end of our reports for this evening.
Madam Chair. Yes, you can we have comments on superintendent's report?
Absolutely.
Okay, I just had a quick comment that I appreciate the superintendent's report and Mr. Sicari's report. Going back to the the comments that the superintendent made regarding going back to the drawing board on the policy for math. I just wanted to to say, I I would love to see whatever we do as a district moving forward and make sure that our coordinators are involved. Just those folks that are teaching, I I did, I did get the chance to meet with some math teachers and learned a lot about just what their feedback was from classroom teaching and what they thought even freshmen needed, all freshmen needed, and what they could do if they had them all taking Algebra One, for instance, instead of pre-algebra, like a pre-algebra type class. So I hope that we will, we will include our coordinators, our district coordinator and folks in the classroom that can give us some real-life feedback, what they can do to get our our struggling students where they need to be toward those new State Board of Education standards. Anybody else?
We will move into the consent agenda section of our agenda. All agenda items listed with the designation of CA are considered to be routine items by the governing body and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion on these items. Any item removed from the consent agenda will be considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. Does any board member request to remove a motion from the consent agenda? Madam Chair, I move to approve all motions listed as consent agenda.
A second.
The motion and a second to approve our motion for a single consent agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Okay, those have been approved. Moving into new business now, we have five items we need to discuss. Madam Chair, I move to approve the notification of the program administrators and high school athletic directors on the attached list that the Board of Trustees intends to offer said administrators a contract of employment for the ensuing contract year.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve notification of program administrators and high school athletic director contracts. We have any questions on that or discussion? No? Okay, do you have a motion? What's that?
He did a fine job. We'll discuss.
Yes, okay. We have a motion and a second, then. So all in favor of approving those contracts, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Approval passes. Madam Chair, I move to approve the administrator contract on the attached list for the two thousand twenty-five, two thousand twenty-six school year and to place them on the appropriate step of the administrator's salary schedule.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve this, the appointment of an administrator. Do we have any discussion on that one? Any questions?
Can I just clarify that these are quite new appointments to fill open positions for next year?
Madam Chair, Trustee, actually, that is correct.
Anybody else? We have a motion and a second to approve the administrator appointment. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, in that process.
Madam Chair, I believe we have at least one of the administrators here with us this evening. Mr. Jeff Patcliffe, please stand and remove Principal McLover Jr. High.
Congratulations.
And Ms. Thompson, am I correct that there are no others that were able to join us this evening?
Great, thank you.
All right. Madam Chair, I move to approve a contract with Stasis Design PC for architectural and engineering services for designing construction administration services for art elementary school replacement.
A second.
We have a motion and a second for approving professional services for the design of art elementary school replacement. Do we have any questions or discussion on that one?
Madam Chair, I think we should have confetti for this. This is an exciting moment, and I think one that has been. I haven't traveled down as far as some of you guys have traveled, so I'm just ecstatic about this. So could we, is this the one, I can't open my computer because I might, it might talk. But can you, can we talk about, like, so this is, are looking for architects or tell us a little bit more about it or?
Could you please come up and give us a brief overview of this motion, please?
Yeah, Madam Chair, members of the board. I probably have a little more to say tonight than usual, but I won't be as long-winded as Jed. So what I want to say is today marks a day that many of us have eagerly anticipated for a while. This movement addresses a school that's been on our long-term facility plan since the early two thousands. And to that point, once a school is determined to be in need of replacement, it takes a minimum, if everything was to go through the day they agreed to that, of about five years. We've averaged, we average about eight years to complete a school from start to finish. So this has been months, even years of hard work and dedication and unwavering commitment from a lot of staff members. This journey's been long and filled with challenges and milestones and but also with a persistent drive to achieve something truly extraordinary for the students of Laramie One. This isn't just a project, but I think it's a vision. This isn't just a project, but I think it's a vision and testament to the collective efforts, innovation, and passion of Laramie County School District One, along with many others. To bring this development to you. Last week, we accepted proposals proposals for design from six design firms. Um, we had an evaluation team that then shortlisted this list of four design firms. All of whom had an opportunity to present to our selection committee. That's, that selection committee commis- consisted of six evaluators, three district personnel, two members of the state construction department, as well as a local architect. And at this time, we're excited to request the approval for contract design services with Stasis Design for the design of the new ARP Elementary School.
Okay. Trustee Hinkle. Um, thank you, Madam Chairman, uh, Mr. Knapp, does this include the demolition, or or will that come later?
This does not include demolition, um, when money's allocated, it's specifically labeled for what it's allocated for, this is for design and construction of the school. Um, there's a possibility of, if there's additional money in the bid process between now and next spring at this time. We may be able to reallocate some of that money, and if not, we would ask for um, money in this next budget session for demo and and um, remediation.
And can I do a follow-up?
Absolutely.
And and so you're anticipating that the construction would start next spring, so a year from now?
Yeah, Madam Chair, uh, Trustee Hinkle, the hundred percent design documents are scheduled to be completed in February of twenty-six. And we would bid probably about thirty days after that.
Thank you.
Trustee Ashby.
Um, so, my my memory is not always fantastic, but I think with some of the previous uh, rebuilds, and particularly with Coyote Ridge. Um, I know there was some, and I know that's different because it's not a rebuild, but, um, there was some. In a, interaction with the teachers and and people around colors and things like more of the. Non-structural pieces of the design, uh, will there be with this one as well?
Yeah, Madam Chair, Trustee Ashby, there will be, um, there will be a charrette design as we start into the design, um, after we award this contract. Um, we'll have a kickoff meeting, and then we'll have a design that they'll put a charrette design together to get ideas and some collaboration. And then there will probably, what you're talking about will be a separate design, um, committee, um, that we did for Coyote Ridge. Uh, I believe it was a principal member, two of the board, and a lot of students that selected, um, the colors, the mascot, and and different things for the school.
Little different, but, okay.
Anybody else?
Um, so, um, the students currently at East Ridge, they will, I'm sorry, I didn't. The kids will continue on their.
Yes, Madam Chair, Trustee Cook, the kids will stay at East Ridge until the school's complete.
Another four or five.
The school is currently scheduled with our Mercer Study to be complete to open in the fall of twenty-eight. Um, you know, depending on wh- what we run into in the next thirty-six months, um, potential of it moving up.
Any other questions for Mr. Knapp? Thank you very much. Right, well, we have a motion and a second to approve the contract with Stasis Design. Um, for our elementary school, so all in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? That passes, what an exciting night to get moving forward on that, yeah, thank you.
Madam Chair, I move to approve the proposals with GH lips. In the amount of nine-hundred-and-sixty-four thousand, four-hundred-and-thirteen thousand dollars. Including a ten percent contingency for associated governmental fees and requirements for the purchase and installation of Central High School video scoreboards. Scoreboards, excuse me.
Do you want to read re- reread the number?
Nine-hundred-and-sixty-four thousand, four-hundred-and-thirteen dollars.
Yeah. I second.
Apologize.
All right, we have a motion and a second, um, to approve. Um, the professional services contract for the Central High School video scoreboard, do we have any questions or discussion on that?
Can we just clarify where that, where those dollars come from?
Absolutely.
Thank you, Mr. Knapp.
Madam Chair, trustees, um, this project, um, was put forward by Central High School. It'll run through our planning and construction department, like a typical project. Um, we put it out for des- for design and bid, um, and the funding comes from a grant or a gift that was given to Central High School from the Maury Brown money. That's directly associated with the school, um, at their discretion to use, and it's not coming out of our major maintenance or general fund.
Thank you.
Okay. That's great, Trustee Claussen.
Um, Chair, I just want to clarify, and I was gonna uh, say the same thing, but. Um, just wanted to say thank you to the Maury Brown Foundation for gifting our Cheyenne High School's a million dollars for. The activities of our students and just the uh, investing in our youth and our community. And, uh, Central High School was given this gift, but our other high schools were too. Uh, I, I think it was East and South were also gifted these, so I just wanted to say that for the record.
Anybody else? Great, all in favor of approving, uh, the contract for the new scoreboards at Central High School, say aye. Anybody opposed? Okay, that passes as well. We have one more motion. I apologize for my reading, I need new glasses. I, Madam Chair, I move to approve professional services by ABI Professional Corporation for the design. Of relocation of the East High School tennis courts in the amount of eighty-seven thousand dollars. Including a ten percent contingency for associated governmental fees and requirements.
Second.
So, a mad, um, with a motion and a second to approve, um, professional services. For the relocation of the East High School tennis courts, do we have any questions or comments on this motion? No, Trustee Claussen.
Um, Chair, I asked about this earlier, um, and I wonder if the superintendent or Mr. Knapp could explain why they want. Why they feel the the need to move the courts.
I believe Mr. Knapp is ready.
Madam Chair, Trustee Claussen, yes, that's also something that's been in our long-term facility plan for quite a while. It was initially, um, contemplated with the move of the new Cary Junior High, um, was to move them out of the parking lot for several reasons. It's, it's not a very good location to have seating or landscaping, it's right along the exit of the parking lot. Um, East High School is also a little bit short on sta- on parking for students and staff. And we currently have a Mercer Study underway on East High School. That actually is due to be completed in April of this year. And I don't know what the results of that will be, but, um, most of the options they were looking at, uh, because it's a capacity issue at East. Is to build additional rooms onto East somewhere, which will probably take part of the parking away. So, um, we thought we would go ahead and continue, we're just looking into sort of an evaluation and design of where those could go. Between East and Cary, um, Junior High, uh, which would help for several reasons, it would also allow some extra parking as well as. Um, getting him down off the top of that hill where it's probably not the best place to have a tennis match.
Any other questions? Mr. Knapp, where's the funding for those tennis courts coming from?
I'm sorry, um, that'll be rec mail.
Rec mail.
Yes.
All right, thank you. Thank you. All right, all in favor of approving the professional services, um, for the relocation of these high school tennis courts, they say aye. Opposed? All right, and that passes as well. The next regular board meeting will be held on Monday, April seventh, two thousand twenty-five, at six P M. A work session will begin at five P M, the district of the business is done. And through the motion for executive session.
Madam Chair, I move to go into executive session prior to adjournment for the purpose of possible student long-term suspension, expulsions, personnel, legal advice. Negotiations and potential litigation.
A second.
We have a motion and a second to go into executive session at this time, all in favor, say aye. Opposed? All right, we will go into executive session and.